...to the flag, United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberating and just as for all.
Local members?
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Trustee Martin.
Here.
Trustee Trombley.
Yes.
Trustee Trombley.
Here.
Trustee Garrett.
Uh, excuse me, she wanted to make it tonight. Okay, now entertain a motion to approve minutes of previous meeting.
So.
You have a second?
Second.
Are there any additions or corrections? Now, all in favor of approving previous minutes, you signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The minister approved. Now, the presentation of petitions, communications, notices, and general question period for members of your community. Do they have any questions?
Are you talking about from the community? Yeah, I got a question.
Okay.
Do I have to say who I am and all that stuff?
You should.
Harville Globe, Forty-fourth Street, Village of Champlain. In all of your eyes, being on the village board, how does the village look to you?
Could be better.
Neula Fountain's Old Store. Everybody know where that is?
Near the laundry.
We got two dumps in the town of Champlain now. The one up at the landfill, on the, on the, on the ridge road, and one at Neula Fountain's Old Store. It's pathetic. Have you seen it?
That's the one by the bridge?
Yep.
Yeah.
It's pathetic. Everything is hanging out there, and we're all shaking our head yes. What are we doing about it?
Well, we'll leave that for Mickey and his report.
They did clean the back out, though.
Yeah, they had, they had a bunch of gar- uh, plastic garbage bags there, and now there's one of them bungee things. That's only in a matter of three days.
No, that was back there, though, but it was pushed back.
Well, okay, I didn't see that. Sorry about that. What about the yellow building downtown? Brush and trees and all that stuff growing around it?
That one?
Guess everything's gonna be left to him, huh?
I'm holding the bag here.
What about the, the lot where the Champlain Hotel used to be? It was mowed, but what about all that brush? Back to him.
We, well, we sent a letter to them. We have to send a letter first before we can, we're prob- we're probably gonna end up cutting it ourselves, but we have to give them the option to, uh, cut it first, which we have, and if we don't hear back from them...
Well, the lot in Cham- uh, where the Champlain Hotel was has been mowed, or there's been a section of it mowed. But also between there and Badet's old place, I don't know what they call it now, there's a lot of brush and stuff.
Yeah, it's somebody from California that owns that.
Okay. So you've got teeth in your law now, allegedly, for, for sending letters, right? It isn't something that you have to keep at? What about that building right up on Oak Street there at the end that, uh, Rose Scoop Isle used to own?
You're taking my thunder away.
Huh?
You're taking my thunder away.
You're gonna...
Oh, yeah, I got all this. I'm waiting here.
Then, hell, if you're gonna got it all taken care of, 'cause I got a list there a mile long, but go ahead, do your thing, and be anxious to hear that. Rest my case, as long as it covers all of the bases.
I mean, don't forget any.
Okay, thank, thanks, thank you.
Yeah.
For, thanks for reminding us.
I was ever glad you came tonight, Mickey.
Always glad to see you, man.
Yes, yes, yes.
Well, that's an excellent segue for, uh, Mickey's report.
Donna said I didn't have to come tonight if I didn't wanna. No, the village, uh, asked me to send out some letters on a lot of these properties, a lot of them you mentioned. Uh, I'll start with the one on Oak Street, the, the house. I did get a letter back from him in April or May. He was going to find a contractor. Well, I emailed him last week, and on Thursday, I checked my emails today, so I don't know if he sent me anything back, but I told him that from April to July was long enough to find a contractor, that the village wants a date of when the building is coming down, a firm date, not an estimation of when it's gonna happen. So I'm gonna hold him to a firm date of when that's coming down, or what's, what's gonna happen with it. Um, the yellow building is being transferred back to the original owner, apparently. Uh, the legal aspect of it has not been finalized, where he officially owns it, so, but he has intentions of looking into fixing the building or tearing it down, one or the other. But that's gonna take some time, you know, as to what he's gonna decide to do with it. The, the old, um, the lot you're talking about, the grass, if the guy that owns the yellow building or is going to own it, cut that grass. Now, I don't know if the owner contacted him or not, I have no idea. So, I haven't heard anything from the owner of that property, which, it's not in California, it's in Brooklyn.
But we got the green card back today, that was signed for.
Okay, so he, he's aware, but I don't know if he contacted the other guy that cut it.
I don't know.
Uh, the brush pile you're talking about, between the two properties, I ran into this a couple of years ago, I believe, I think that there's an old stone foundation there, and there's brush, but I'm not sure if it's Badet's property or the Champlain House property.
Um, I'm gonna just put two cents in. Reggie the Fountain was in the greenhouse down here in the corner. He mowed all that lawn today. And he had his little wagon, and he took all the brush and stuff around the pole and stuff by the driveway, and they were cleaning it up. I don't know if he's gonna finish that up around there.
The lawn.
Yeah.
Nothing to do with the brush.
All the brush that was around the pole, along the driveways, stuff, he cut all that.
Um, the, the hot, the property next to the river, that's a court case, it's in Judge Favreau's court, I think it's for the twenty-third, I don't know, whatever he decides is gonna happen.
Court case, how, to clean it up?
Well, what's happening is, I sent the property owner an appearance ticket for not providing dumpster garbage services, according to the building code, which he's supposed to do. I've talked to him several times about this, I've sent him letters, which are part of the, my information for the court. So, when this came up, I just issued the appearance ticket, and he can answer to the judge as to why he's not providing garbage service. If he has to raise his rent, that's his responsibility, it's not ours. Um, it's his apartment, he needs to be responsible for the people he rents to and the property he owns, as well as any other landlord in the village, so I'm, I'm going that route now. It's not like, uh, you know, he's a nice guy, I like talking with him, and I mean, but, I mean, what do you do after a while? You gotta do something. So, we'll see what happens with that.
What about the stuff that's all out front?
That's all part of, I've got pictures, documentations for the court, and whatever the judge decides, I mean, I can only...
What day is he gonna be up there?
I believe it's the twenty-third, next, next Wednesday, next Thursday? So, um, other than that, I sent out some other letters for grass, Horizon Heights, uh, the school, they cut theirs up there, guess you're gonna make hay. Horizon Heights, I don't know, there was a few other ones.
Couldn't hay it.
Spruce Street, they, they cut the grass, but that's another court case, and I'm sure they're gonna cut the grass again, denied the court case, just like they did last year, but I've got it all documented, so that they know that there was a ticket issued last year, and there's another one this year. It's, it's a never-ending cycle with these people.
Is Spruce Street coming up in court?
Yes.
The same day?
Yes.
Okay, what about the, the, the old fire station, the village hall downtown? All that stuff that's grown up there?
The, on the corner of Church?
Church and Smane.
Well, I didn't send them any letter, but, yeah, I noticed that the brush, I did last year, sent them a thing, and they, they cut it, but I'll have to do the same thing again. So, slowly trying to get to all of them, I mean, some I miss.
Jesus, I don't know why.
Mike, can we go back to the yellow building down there a little bit?
Yeah.
Is there any way that we can get those folks to come in and close that building up, so it's not accessible to?
Mr. Marshall sent a letter to them, you know, going down the path of an unsafe building and, and starting down that route, and he was handling that aspect of it because of the legalities involved. I don't know if we can go in there and do anything to that property as far as securing it at this time, and I, I don't know whether you should do that without checking it with him.
Can we check with him? Because I was gonna bring the same thing up, it's wide open.
Yeah, well, it, it was wide o- and it's been wide open.
Some ways it'd get hurt.
Right, and that's one of the reasons why I more or less turned it over to him, to take the legal route, to, you know, if we're gonna condemn the building, or if they ever get the ownership settled, which supposedly they are, he lives in here talking with me, and once he takes possession of it, he told me he was gonna, you know, board it up and make sure it's not accessible, 'cause I told him that was a, a big problem, as well as the, the grass, the brush, and the rest of the junk that's around the place. Um, the, the other building, the one that burnt, that's going through asbestos testing, and hopefully he's gonna be removing that. Um, there's a question as to who has insurance on that and who doesn't, and there's some issues there, so I don't know what's gonna happen. Trying to push it, so where he's gonna take care of it, the village will have to get involved.
That's the one downtown?
Yeah.
The one that got fired?
Yeah. Um, on some happier notes, uh, we have a new restaurant open in the village, I went there tonight, it's excellent, I thought it was, anyway. Um, as far as new developments, we have a couple of zoning applications coming forward. One is the former anchor building, there's possibility of some new business going in there, related to the Nova Bus people. And then the, the main knitting building is another project that's gonna be on the agenda for zoning, so commercially wise, things are picking up in the village with properties that there was nothing before, and if all goes well with these two properties, there should be some decent jobs, they're manufacturing-type jobs versus warehousing jobs, which probably pay better, so hopefully I'll keep going that way.
Oh, that's good news.
Yeah.
What's the situation with the old meat plant up there, is that in the town?
The old meat?
It's in the town.
Rosterum?
Alco.
Alco. Is that in the village or town?
Oh, it's the town.
Oh, okay.
It's vacant, they left the building, basically.
It was open Saturday.
They were in there?
Somebody was in there Saturday, grass was over.
There's a guy that owns it, but he's basically, his business is closed, uh, he ran a furrier out of there, and that portion has been closed, uh, I don't know what they do with there, I know they're in there off and on, but as far as I know, it's...
Have you been in there?
Couple times.
Leaving?
No.
Since that last outfit closed?
Well, the, the one that's been there, they've been there for...
Fur business, I heard?
Yeah.
Jeez, I'd hate to like to see the inside of that place. Man.
Not like it used to be. Other than that, uh, are you gonna talk about shared services, or you want me to?
Go ahead.
As far as shared services goes, the, the engineers came up, they did the initial inspection, they talked with the, the water, wastewater operators here in Rouse's Point in the town, and now we're scheduling a meeting with them. They have stuff that they're gonna request from us to provide them as far as, uh, flow testing and other stuff, the, the list that they said that they would need. Uh, they've had a couple of meetings on what they've done, they're moving along with it internally, but they wanna come up and meet with the, the committee and move forward from there, so that's on the list it thinks to do. I think that's it.
Jesus, you've done well.
One other thing, uh, I just wanna bring to your attention, and I know I've talked with Juanita about it, uh, at the town I got a, so something came in the mail from the DEC as far as grants for wastewater projects and, and that type of stuff, and there's really nothing in the town that we could apply for, but I read through it, and I, I think if you need something on your wastewater plant, you could apply through that, that grant, it's, the applications are due October sixteenth, so you have time to think about it, and, you know, I don't know if you need anything down there or not, but some of the stimulus money could go towards that if you have something in mind. Had you not got the belt filter press, that would've been a perfect project, but you have one, so you don't need that.
There are other things in there.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know the whole thing down there, but in reading the grant application, it's geared more towards municipalities with wastewater treatment plants and stuff versus just distribution lines like what we have in the towns, so that sort of caught my attention. Other than that, I don't have any more.
I got one question. When they did, does the village have maps of, of the last water and sewer system that was done to the village when Palmer was here? Do they have the running lines, where they are and all that stuff?
Uh, well, you have prints, but I don't know how accurate some of the older ones are, the newer ones are probably...
Older ones being what, before Palmer put that in?
Oh, yeah, we got some from way back.
The, the other ones, the other ones are pretty accurate, just, we have prints of where they put the, they got measurements of the curb stops and stuff in the water line itself.
Just what I'm, what I'm leading up to is, before that water system, we had more fire hydrants than we do now, and I don't know what the reason is. What was the reason for taking a lot of fire hydrants out, other than cost factor? I know you guys weren't here.
That, that predates me, I really wouldn't know why they did that.
Do you remember, Larry?
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember how many there was back then, but, uh, we have sixty-some fire hydrants now.
Sixty?
Sixty, I think sixty-six.
And what is, well, okay.
What, what it is, they put, they, a lot of them, they took the fire hydrant out because they put the water main on the opposite side of the road.
Like, next to me, next to Darlene Maternal, or whatever.
There was a fire hydrant there.
There was a fire hydrant there, no longer.
Right.
I haven't ever owned it. There was one up in front of John Etche's house.
Correct.
For the whole street.
And one up on the end.
And then when you had, like, the fire down there, what's his name's place there on Cedar Street, they had to go to the top of the hill and, uh, on Church Street for, uh, for a hydrant, right?
Um, I believe they chose out one for a reason, if I remember correctly, you'd have to tell me.
Pressure?
Yeah, because of pressure.
Okay.
The first...
I was just wondering why they took out fire hydrants when that were in certain places, unless it was a cost factor? And you know what cost of firefighting is, Jesus.
I don't know, there must be some code, though.
There is.
They have to follow.
Yeah.
You're gonna have so far?
No, there, there's a very specific code when it comes to fire hydrants, uh, how far apart they are, depending on your flows and stuff like that. Um, they call it the ten states, basically code that's developed in the southern part of the, the country, and that's what they use for mapping out fire hydrants or fire protection systems. So if they take one out, they have to be able to, you know, justify taking it out by using another one somewhere that's out, may not be in the same exact location, but it's within so many feet, I'm sure.
Chris Trombley probably will answer your question to that.
Huh?
Chris Trombley would probably be able to answer your question the best, I think.
Yeah. But other than that, like, we, we have a good mapping system of the, of the, of the water system I always put in, and the sewer system?
Yep.
I mean, somebody can come in here and not, you're familiar with it?
Yeah.
But somebody comes in from someplace and wants to see it?
We have the maps in the grass.
You do? Okay.
Should we mention that part of the service is different? At that very place?
Yeah, shows lines.
Water and sewers.
Correct. Size A R, they're all color-coded. Bing, the study that's taking place in the shared service is also addressing just that.
Really?
Yes.
'Cause I was talking to a couple of people today, and I don't know how we got into it, but that mapping got into it, and I remember the last time I talked to Ben Dane, and that's quite a while ago. I mean, Ben knew, I always saw him, he knew the village quite well, 'cause he was on the village board, and he was quite knowledgeable, and I said, you know, there aren't many people left. In fact, Bill LaBelle just died, so he's one of the last ones that really knows what the hell's going on around there, knew. So I'm just wondering, you know, you'd like to think that at least you got a mapping system of all these things.
I used to go with Ben Dane all the time.
Oh, yeah, this was, I was the, the nurse, and it's... But anyway, that's all I'm gonna take up tonight, I'm gonna sit and listen. You did a hell of a job, Mike. Keep it up.
Answered all your questions.
No, but don't make me have to come back.
Okay, uh, receiving the mayor's report, um, gonna be setting up dates for interviews, I think I'm gonna be starting, uh, in two weeks. Uh, I just wanna remind everybody, and Tom will elaborate on this, there's several events under the quad centennial celebration that are coming up. Uh, one is August first in Plattsburgh, at the Old, they're having a family festival there. And closer to home, we have, uh, the, August second, we have the religious day celebration here for the quad event, which is, they're gonna rededicate the statue of me, and, uh, Tom, like Tom will fill us in more on that, and then August eighth is our community day here, and there's gonna be many events, and I hope that everyone, uh, comes out and participates. It's a very big, uh, very big celebration for us, and, uh, I really encourage everyone to be able, to come that is able to. And the other comment I have is, uh, I wanna commend the, uh, Larry Sorrell and, uh, rest of public works crew, they're doing a great job, we're shorthanded, uh, we don't have a superintendent at the moment, and, uh, they've been holding things together pretty well for what manpower that we have, uh, just wanna say thanks. And that's all I have, so. Trustee Trombley?
Okay, um, we'll start paving on July twentieth and twenty-first?
No.
Twenty-first, twenty-second?
No, July twentieth and July twenty-second, twenty-first, they're not working.
Okay. I missed a part of the dates, right? Uh, finish up on South Street, so that whole street will, will be complete, and then Elm Street from Modern Mechanical east to the village line, so heading up towards the credit union, we'll do a portion there. Larry, um, was kind enough to do up some estimates to finish up Elm Street for next year, so that'll be the, the one project, it might be the only thing that we're able to do, depending on what kind of funds we have, CHIPS funding, but, uh, we'll look at trying to finish up Elm Street for next year. There also will be a zoning board meeting on this Wednesday evening, um, and I unfortunately will not be able to be there, and, uh, I'd like to echo Jeff's comments to, uh, to Larry and to the rest of the crew for the work that they're doing, um, we're shorthanded, and, um, they're, they're pulling it all together and doing a good job, so, thanks.
Thank you, Kim. Trustee Martin?
Oh, wastewater issues. I'd like to express my appreciation to Terry and Jimmy on their work at the wastewater plant. They've been running the belt filter press quite strenuously, approximately a hundred and forty-four tons of sludge over the last month, making repairs on vital equipment, performing maintenance, uh, as needed on the equipment, and cleaning the facility, maintaining the building and grounds. Their initiative and hard work has increased the productivity and overall effectiveness of the plant. Special thanks to Bob Jewell for his expertise in running the wastewater plant, working closely with Terry and Jimmy. Uh, under his direction, the plant is running product, productively and, and, that's not the correct word, safely, anyway. Uh, very helpful in explaining how the plant operates and the importance of maintaining equipment to prevent future problems. I would like to, and I'm, I'm sure the mayor as well, would like to invite the rest of the board and, uh, other presidents of the community to go down and, uh, visit the plant, see how it functions. Uh, we've been copied with his work log, uh, you can see how much Bob and our work crew have accomplished over the, in a very short period of time. Thanks to Larry for helping Bob with paperwork and necessary maintenance assistance. Uh, I have a special request to the residents of the community and businesses, please dispose of your cooking oils and grease properly and not dump it into the sewer system. It's causing huge problems at the pump stations and at the wastewater plant. It is my understanding that businesses must document their waste oil removal from their facilities so that it is properly disposed of. A very expensive proposition to try to deal with this grease as it builds up in the, in the sewer system. And on a lighter note, uh, reminder to the residents, August eighth, the village fest in the park, good time will be had by all attending. Volunteers who still needed to help cook the hot dogs for the event, join Bing and I at the girls.
Love it. Love it.
Thank you, thank you for your report. Trustee Trombley?
Okay, um, first of all, I wanna echo what, um, Mayor Moore said, thank you to the crew, thank you Larry for stepping up, we are very shorthanded, we're missing Woody and the superintendent, they're doing a good job. I also wanna thank you for, you know, helping out with, with the flags, for the trimming that was done in preparation of the quad. Um, I hope weather permits, I mean, give them a touch-up just before August eighth, but, uh, it looks really good, the moving bank looks nice, I don't know if you've been down at the park, but that is a highlight of the village, the park looks good, big, it's really nice. Um, and also, I had the same note, I was rehearing with Greg, said thanks for all the hard work that the guys have been doing down at the wastewater plant, from what I understand, and unfortunately, I haven't been able to down there, it's been, uh, it's been quite a task. Um, I also wanna thank Champlain Telephone Company for all the time they've spent putting flags up our village, I don't know if everybody's noticed, but I, all the flags that were purchased for the quad celebration, they, they got them up before the Fourth of July, they looked really nice. Unfortunately, all the weather we've had in the storm started damaging them, so they had to go back through again and reinforce all the brackets, so, you know, thank you to Steve Southwick and his crew. Then for the quad celebrations, as Jeff pointed out, I was gonna, uh, add a little bit to what he started out with, August second is religious day, um, this is gonna be a really nice event, so it's gonna be a, a mass at Saint Mary's, um, it's going to be said both in French and in English, and forgive me, I cannot think of the priest name that's gonna be officiating, but he is from Saint Michael's in Burlington, and I believe it's maybe Father Rainville, but I'm not positive. And we'll also have Father Terry LaValle that will be, uh, on the altar as well, and, um, after Mass, I'll be rededicating the statue of Samuel de Champlain, which was the first statue in, in the States, by the way, that was erected here in the States, and then they'll be laying a wreath both on the, on the grave of Camilla Fontaine and on, uh, on the tomb behind the statue of Father, uh, Che- what's that?
Chao.
Chao, is that how you pronounce it? Thank you, I was struggling with that. And, uh, 'cause they were very instrumental in, in getting the statue erected. And then there'll be a reception following at the KFCs after, uh, those events, so, uh, I'm hoping people come out and go to Mass and, and enjoy that day, it's gonna be very, very nice. August eighth, we do have hot dog cookers, by the way, I have a little time to fill you in. There's three of them right here.
Glad you took me out, though.
Yeah, we're, we're, we'll still take volunteers, but we're pretty good shape, we've, uh, we've got five in there cooking with us, uh, all the permits are in place. There's gonna be events for the children, there'll be a jumping cage, a petting zoo, miniature ponies, um, there'll be a lot of things for the adults, there'll be an antique car show, uh, antique tractors, antique car rides, actually, from Dr. Southwick, if you wanna take a ride in Model A or something. Um, there'll be a live band, there'll be storytelling, uh, it's, it's really a nice event, and the whole committee has done a great job, Bruce West has done an excellent job planning this, and Rayner Shine, we got big tents, come on down, I hope that we have a huge turnout, 'cause we're planning on a lot of people.
All this is at the park?
All this is at the park, that's correct. And we're, um, there will be a tree planting, we're working out the details for the ceremony, but I think we may have the mayor and the town supervisor involved in that, we'll see, and that'll be the opening ceremony first thing in the morning, I think it'll be scheduled for ten thirty. So that's all I have.
Thanks, Tom. I think that's gonna be a good event. Did you mention about the tree?
Yeah, yeah, that, that's, it's gonna happen.
Okay. Uh, hey, I'll have the report of the board treasurer.
Um, everyone has received their expense for everyone's report for June, and we also did a water and sewer billing this month. Um, water was fifty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty-four nineteen, and sewer was seventy-six thousand, five hundred and forty-six eleven.
What was that again, what is?
Seventy-six thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars and eleven cents. We also had our village auditor there here this weekend, close books for the end of May. For yearly books that...
For the year, wasn't it?
Yeah, our fiscal books, the May third books.
Okay, very good. Uh, at this time, I'd like to present the warrant for payment.
Okay, we have two bills to add.
Okay. Okay.
One bill is for our auditor, come out of A thirteen twenty point one, that's the amount of two hundred dollars. And our other one is for Bob Jewell, to come out of G eight one thirty point four, three hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty cents. Three hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty cents.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve your report?
Any motion?
Second?
Second.
Are there any questions on the order? Now, Justin Chobley?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Justin Chobley?
Aye.
Mayor Moore, aye. At this time, an empty motion, meeting in a recess, so we could have a public hearing on local audit number one.
Make a motion for recess at the public hearing.
Sure.
Justin Chobley, second. Greg? Is there any discussion? Now, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Now opposed? The motion is carried, we're in recess, and at this time, I'd open up the public hearing on local audit number one. Do you want to read that one, Edith, so that everyone knows what we're talking about?
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Trustees, the Village of Champlain, Clinton County, State of New York, will be on the thirteenth day of July, two thousand nine, hold a public hearing at Municipal Office on Main Street in the Village of Champlain at seven o'clock, or here there regarding the adoption and passage of the following local law. Local law number one for the year two thousand nine for the Village of Champlain. The local law to amend and supplement Chapter sixty, Fire Prevention and Building Construction of the Code of the Village of Champlain by the addition thereto to a new section, solid fuel burning appliances. This local law amends and supplements Chapter sixty, Fire Prevention and Building Construction by adding a new sixty dash eighteen entitled Solid Fuel Burning Appliances. This local law prohibits the installation, construction, or placement of outdoor furnaces in the Village of Champlain. This local law also requires a permit to construct, install, or renovate a solid fuel burning appliance in the village. The use of a coal, a charcoal grill is exempt from these provisions. Above is a summary of the local law being considered as after set. The full text for local law is available for inspection at the village office during normal business hours.
Okay, is there any public comment?
They're saying the use of a charcoal grill is, doesn't come under that. What about a gas grill?
No, that's, that's not under this either. That's solid fuel.
Well, it's propane or whatever it comes.
It's not a solid fuel. Either gas.
Well, so we can miss out on our gas grills.
Okay.
I hope there's no further comment. An empty motion to close the public hearing.
Any motion?
Yeah, Chobley, second. Yeah, we definitely have to be closing. Second?
I'll close. I'll second to close the public hearing.
Now, all in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Close, an empty motion to reopen the meeting?
Second.
Second, I tell them. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion, the meeting is back in session, and now we can vote it up. Local, local audit number one of two thousand nine, any votes on any motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve local audit number one. That's ready.
Second?
I'll second.
Second, I tell them. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I got a question, is there something in there about replacement? Did I miss that? I don't have my copy.
Well...
They need to have, yeah, a permit to replace.
The full text exempts any present units that are...
Yeah, the grandfathered.
Grandfathered, yeah. That wasn't on this, but it's on the full text.
Okay.
In the full text. Any further questions? If not, Trustee Chobley?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Chobley?
Aye.
Mayor Moore, aye. Local audit number one is passed. Okay, now I have superintendent's report. Larry Sorrell has offered to fill in here, so Larry, if you want to fill us in on what's going on, all that works.
We've been keeping up with the lung and stuff, keeping that all molded up, doing stuff down around the fence at the wastewater plant and stuff. Liam Menard and his Chevailles came in last week and pulled the pump, the new pump and stuff well. I have pictures inside on it. Was just about ready to fall off. I took a sample after letting it set, and that one came back. These wells aren't online. And that one, I had to do another sample, and the second one came back absent, but we're gonna wait and see after all, because there's a numerous amount of tests that we have to do. And I have to let in copper next year, so if we can just keep that well going, flushing it and stuff, and make it purify it better, and then do all the samples and save a few thousand dollars. He had to get order some dry contacts and a face protector, so if we got hit with lightning, it wouldn't take out the pump. And I'm still working on the blocks and stuff for the quad centennial already. NICEX is supposed to come tomorrow and inspect them, and hopefully get them up this week. We cut the rebates back on the road, thanks to the town of Plattsburgh, a limited user machine. That's all set, we're ready to go on that. Get a couple valve box fires and just have to go.
Is that, is that cutting on Elm Street, or?
Yes. That's the cuttings across the street, on Elm Street, and also on South Street, so if anybody hits a little bump, we'll take care of it next week.
Thank you for, those that don't know, the drops are for the celebration of Urban Street and the Villas, and for any other event following that.
Yeah, there'll be permanent installations, so that's...
That's excellent.
And down there, I think Larry probably wanted to mention that we got our other distribution pump, our new distribution pump, that's down there soon again.
Just as corrupts you by.
We'll be getting to that when we get a chance. Okay, thank you, Larry. Okay, now I have correspondence, want to hear?
Correspondence from State Department of Health and Janet Guthrie regarding water projects submitted to the drinking water state revolving fund. Correspondence regarding youth commission bus mileage increase for NCCS. Notice from TAP enter charges regarding a tool sale on Sunday, July nineteenth, two thousand nine, at the American Legion. Correspondence from John Faber regarding the sidewalk in front of his residence at seven thirty-nine Prospect Street. Letter to Town Plattsburgh and copy of memorandum of understanding regarding wastewater treatment plant. Correspondence from Clinton County Youth Bureau regarding reduction in youth program funding. Correspondence from Town Moores regarding the northern corridor highway, and a copy of their adopted resolution in support of the proposed northern corridor highway. Letter to Ian Fasky regarding his final paycheck. Correspondence from Clinton County Health Department regarding redevelopment of emergency well and placement online of well number one. Correspondence from Clinton County Highway Department regarding contract to supply and deliver diesel fuel, unleaded gasoline, and oil. Letter to Woody Kissel regarding one-year leave of absence.
Thank you, Edita. I didn't have any old business. Did anyone else have anything new or old business? Not moved to new business. I have a employee issue I need to discuss. I'd like to make a motion to have a group second session to discuss that.
Motion.
Tom, put in a motion. Kim, second. Yeah, is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried, we'll recess briefly. Carry this.